Please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Vito.
Presente.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Present.
Counselor Ray Coopero. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
And Counselor Zabit.
Present.
All members present.
At this time, we will go into the memoriam celebratory resolution. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Coopero regarding Italian Heritage Month. Whereas October is the month that many Italian heritage celebrate with so many others in Italian festivals all throughout the Boston area, whereas Italian heritage is richly entwined in the history of our country. This heritage did not begin with the well-known voyages of Amerigo Vespucci, whom our country was named after, continues to be present in the fields of exploration, science, the arts, literature, as well as business and development. And whereas Italians and those of Italian descent have made remarkable contributions to our nation, the list is quite long. American history is replete with citizens of Italian lineage, including the signing of the Declaration of Independence and the formation of the U.S. Constitution. Italian Americans have fought in every war, from Revolutionary War to recent conflicts, and have served with distinction, including several Congressional Medal of Honor recipients. Italian Americans were instrumental in the building and development of many of our major cities. Italian immigrants built the bridges and roads that we use today. Several major U.S. universities have been founded and directed by Italian Americans, and valuable discoveries in science and medicine are credited of those of Italian heritage as well. Whereas Tom Ambrosino and Francisco Coopero, for their contributions as Italian Americans in service to their communities, now therefore be resolved that we, the members of City Council, declare October as Italian Heritage Month in 2021. And there is awarding to Tom Ambrosino and Francisco Coopero recognition. Counselor Coopero.
Under suspension, you'd like to speak on it if it's possible?
You have the floor.
For a very long time, Italians have contributed to this great nation of ours, and have never cried or complained and wanted accolades to say, "This is who I am. This is what I've done for this nation." If you go back in history, you will find this is only a small part of what they did. Italians were the only race, the only race on earth, that had a distinct effect on mankind. They had a distinct effect on mankind through different times. One, they had it with the Roman Empire, which gave roads, soldiers, and everything. The second was the Renaissance, where they had great artists, great painters, and the first schools of medicines and everything. And the third was the art, what many, I think what we still have today is Enrico Fermi, which did split the atom, Marconi, which gave you the radio, Mauchi, which gave you the telephone, and many, and Volta, which gave you the battery. But that's just a few things what they did, but that's not what Italians are. Italians is a race of Latin people, which themselves have been prejudiced against, were discriminated against, and through it all, they persevered and did all the things they had to do to survive in our great nation. That is one thing. And here, I, like I said, Mr. Ambrosino, he contributes to our city. He's of Italian heritage. And my son, which he spent, he went to two different wars, and he's a Boston policeman. And I forgot to mention Michelle Watson, which she is of Italian origin, and she contributes to our city too. So that's all I have to say about what Italians are. There ain't much you can say about them. The only thing I can say is that they were among the first Latin people to come to our nation, and they were among the first Latin people to be discriminated against. They were discriminated for many, many years when they came here. A lot of them had to change their names because of who they were. They had to change their last names. There was a generation, back in the 30s and 20s, they wanted to assimilate so much to be Americans that they forgot who they were. They forgot that they were Italians, they were Latins. They forgot who they were. And now, I believe that most of us understand who we are and where we come from. And it's a great thing. Thank you.
Counsel Brown.
President, I want to congratulate Counsel for bringing a resolution. As custom, we recognize all of our heritages and all of our accomplishments. And we obviously do this this month for the Italian-American Heritage Month, where we recognize the accomplishment and the great work that a lot of Italians have done and continue to do. So I want to just thank my colleagues for bringing this in and just again, as we recognize different months throughout the year. Thank you.
Would you like a break so you can present the... Yes. At this time, we'll take a brief break so that we can present to Mr. Ambrosino his recognition for Italian Heritage Month.
Okay. Our next resolution is a resolution introduced by Counselor Roya Avellaneda regarding Arbor Day. Where on October 30th, 2021, the City of Chelsea will officially celebrate Arbor Day. And as part of this special day, the Massachusetts Tree Wardens and Foresters Association will come to the City of Chelsea to plant a public shade tree. Children, parents, community leaders, public officials, municipal employees are invited to participate in the event. This year, the event is to ensure that the city maintains its status as Tree City USA. This year, the City of Chelsea has officially been recognized as Tree City USA for the 17th year by the National Arbor Day. Being Tree City USA gives Chelsea and benefits, the benefits of having more state resources to further enhance the quality and quantity and quality of trees in Chelsea. Tree City USA Award is given by the National Arbor Day Foundation in cooperation with the National Association of the State Foresters and USDA Forest Service to recognize the environmental improvement and encourage higher levels of tree care throughout America. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council would like to recognize the efforts of the Department of Public Works and community for their work towards improving Chelsea's environment via the enhanced tree program for securing Tree City USA status for the 17th year in a row and for having successful 2021 Arbor Day event. Counselor Naomi Zabit moves to adopt this under suspension, on a road, no, suspension. And I just want to recognize that we do have our tree warden here in the audience, our DBW Commissioner Fidel Maltese, who has many hats in the community. Also have a resolution introduced by Counselor Avellaneda regarding honoring Mary Ann Ramos for the service in Elder Affairs.
Whereas Mary Ann Ramos, a longtime resident and well-respected artist in the City of Chelsea, served as a public champion to the seniors and immigrant community of Chelsea for over two decades. And whereas in the early years of Mary Ann Ramos' work in Chelsea, she served as a mediator for the Housing Service Program Committee on Housing Resources Board. And whereas Mary Ann Ramos was hired by the City of Chelsea in 1996, and through her hard work and activism, Mary Ann pioneered the Chelsea Senior Center to be an inclusive center for all, particularly for those newly migrated from the countries of Central America and other Latin American regions to ensure all had a place and a voice in the community. And whereas Mary Ann Ramos served as Chelsea's Elder Affairs Outreach Program Coordinator for over 20 years and created programs of cultural diversity, including a citizenship class, an ESL class, a cultural arts program, cultural celebrations, intergenerational programs, and programs of exploration and expression. And whereas Mary Ann Ramos, through her admiration for art, poetry, and ethnic inclusion, helped bridge gaps of age and prejudice. And whereas Mary Ann Ramos retired from the City of Chelsea on June 30th, 2020, now therefore be it resolved, the City of Chelsea and the Chelsea City Council hereby recognize and honor Ms. Mary Ann Ramos for her outstanding dedicated service to the City of Chelsea.
Counselor Leah Robinson.
Suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none. Counselor Vito.
I just want to add that Mary Ann Ramos is an amazing individual, an activist, proponent of affordable housing, an amazing artist, that she's contributed to this community in multiple, multiple ways, even more than just her official capacity. She's been a mentor to me, an amazing support, and really advocating for folks who didn't speak English over at the senior center. And I just wanted to just thank the maker of the resolution because she definitely, this is well overdue. Thank you.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you. Counsel, I'm glad to, Mary Ann, as we know, has been over the senior office for many years, working hard, volunteering at first. She's just been a graceful woman, a very spiritual, a very happy, loving, joyful woman. She has been a very good pillar to a lot of our seniors in the community. You can still see her walking down Broadway from 8:55. And I just want to really thank her for all the years of service. And even before she was at the senior place, she was out there just volunteering to help seniors and do errands for seniors and making sure that they were informed of their rights and also the service that the city had. So it's great to have residents in the city to volunteer their time. And when they get these resolutions, it's good for us to thank them, not only publicly, but also privately for the work and the service that they've done over the years. Thank you.
When I move on to our next portion of our agenda, we will now open up the public hearing. Again, this is public hearing. On, the City of Chelsea is holding a public hearing regarding its home rule petition introduced by Counsel Avellaneda regarding proposed charter amendments recommended by the Charter Review Committee. A copy of the home rule petition can be found at Chelsea City Office or can be sent via email to our office. So again, this is an open period for public comment on the amendments proposed on the charter.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. Roberto Jimenez, 40 Eleanor Street, at-large member of the Chelsea School Committee. I have a few thoughts on all these, but I will begin with Counselor Zabit's proposal to have duly elected members of this council have to forfeit their duties for missing meetings without being excused by the council. What is to prevent the City Council from using this power to not excuse members that they disagree with and essentially override the voters of Chelsea? It is absolutely a ridiculous power grab, more so when it is done by simple majority vote. When each of you, as well as I and the members of the school committee are elected, it is the voters who have the duty and power to oust us, not anybody else. In terms of the threshold of 25 votes, again, it is setting a bar for democracy. The bar should be whatever the voter said. If we do not make voting mandatory for everyone, then whoever wants to turn out, turns out, and that is what we get, right? We don't get to choose the voters who elect us, right? We just, we have to go out there and get votes, and whoever votes, votes, and whoever wins, wins, and whoever loses, loses, right? Like, we do not, we should not be setting thresholds for democracy. Democracy should be as open and able for people to participate as possible. And lastly, in terms of reducing the size of the City Council, again, we are reducing democracy by having fewer people, especially when we have essentially more people at large and fewer district councilors. We know that, we went through this process already, right? We moved from an all-at-large body to a system that has districts, right? We know that district systems work better to represent the people of a city, especially when there are demographic differences between those different districts. So I think it would be ridiculous to go backwards. This is at least one step backward, if not two. So I would ask that all of these are voted on. Thank you.
My name is Marisol Santiago. I'm the District III Representative on the School Committee. I too came to express my concerns about the amendments and the conversations that came out of making our city government smaller. As someone who was appointed to the Chelsea School Committee after my representative stepped down, I too was very excited about improving civic engagement by recruiting my neighbors, in particular, parents, since I'm the only member that currently has a child in our Chelsea Public Schools, serving on the School Committee, out of nine people. I believe that we need to strengthen and diversify all our boards, including all our boards, and the way we make governance more inclusive. And that doesn't apply to just civic engagement being people who show up to participate. I was very struck and very concerned by the proposal and comments made during that Charter Review Commission that suggested that taking away seats would promote civic engagement. It is completely false, and it is extremely problematic. Civic engagement is not just people participating in elections. Civic engagement is securing polling locations, making them accessible. It also has to do with language justice, which in this city, we fought to have. Credit to the people who fought so that we could have translated ballots in our city. Credit to the people who fought so that we could have district seats. And those are things that perhaps other people that might be newer to our city don't understand, but it's very fundamental to the fabric and history of this immigrant city. The people who have made these decisions at that time, because of receivership in the early 2000s, we've come a long way. We've put in a lot of work, and our families in our community feel better that we have more equitable representation. And I think that it would be a huge disservice to go back in time and pretend that that wouldn't be, that that wouldn't be a disservice to the City of Chelsea. If any of the councilors want to talk to me more about that, I make myself available. My number is public. It sits on the Chelsea Public Schools website. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. But tonight, I would just like to say for those watching at home, for anybody who's not here, I really commend the folks that made this possible, and I think it is our duty to protect it. Thank you.
Hi, Susan Backstrom. I live at 260 Clark Ave, number 807 in Chelsea. And I was going to speak about a lot of the different things in the City Council meeting that are coming up, but the lion's share of what I'd like to talk about is the home petition, the home rules petition. And so, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilors, and special thanks to City Manager Tom Ambrosino for putting my name forward again for the Chelsea Disability Commission for three years. I am really honored, and I'm really excited to continue to serve. In that vein, I respond to ID 22HR2. First of all, my thinking on the amendment number one is that nine members is too few. You've got three at large, and then you've got eight different precincts or wards. So how would you, you'd have to re-divide the city and re-divide the political connections that we've already made in the city, in our wards. I get really excited when I see my Counselor Zabit in our district and just out in the community. And so, you know, those political or engagement connections are really, really important, and they're part of the, you know, the makeup of Chelsea. And I realize that the apathetic party is the largest in the United States, but we continue to need more engagement. I mean, it's democracy, and it's at stake. And number two is whoever gets the most, oh, amendment number two is whoever gets the most votes should win. The number 25 is arbitrary, because if 15 people, if 25 people vote, and 15 people vote for this person, and then 10, or 15 people vote for the writing candidate, and then 10 votes for the one who put in the time to do it, the writing candidate should win, even if they didn't get any more than 15, because they have gotten more than a majority of the votes. It's a balancing act. And so, the arbitrary numbers of nine council members and 25 votes is, it seems arbitrary to me. And let's see, amendment three states that any disability, the ADA states that any disability needs to be accommodated, like even absences. If someone is a servant of the community and they have, they have an issue that they are dealing with, and this issue is known by the community, by their fellow councilors, by the media, by their own social media, their social networks, that person has made it clear that what they're going through is really important. If they can't show up because they need mental health help, like we saw in the Olympics, if they can't show up because they need, they've, they thought they would be able to go, they're all dressed and ready, and they can't make it because they spend the rest of the evening in their lavatory because of incontinence or whatever, that is something that is known, it's a known quantity, and it can be communicated. It doesn't have to be communicated by calling somebody, because if they're busy, if they're taking, if they're doing self-care, that busyness, that extra step would preclude someone from having a safe and sane moment to themselves. And some, and so, three days, or three meetings is an arbitrary number of meetings. It has to be case by case and people by people and situation by situation, because that's what the ADA says we are responsible for as citizens. It says that we extend to other people the power to manage their own life and stuff like that. And then amendment four is basically repeating amendment two, and that whoever gets the most votes for school committee should win the school committee. 25 seems to be an arbitrary number. And then amendment five and amendment six, I have no argument, I have no arguments with. And the, for more on the ADA and the disability situation, ID 2225, the ISD needs to work with Chelsea Disability Commission. So as many, as much connection with the ISD to the Chelsea Disability Commission, the better, because the Chelsea Disability Commission needs to be able to rely on the ISD to deal with elevator issues and issues in condos and situations where Public Housing Authority has no sway. So these people who are struggling, they need to be able to rely on something in the government, and that would be the ISD. And then a general comment, I'll save for the rest of the public comment section. Anyway, that's all I have to, about that.
So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Ambrosino and members of the Chelsea City Council for, yeah, get to that, to have me on the Chelsea Disability Commission. My name is Alexander Floyd Vargas. I'm at 260 Clark Ave, 807 in Chelsea. I also came back here to discuss the petition. I do believe that three meetings, this question of three meetings, it doesn't tell me enough. I don't know if it's because, and if you look at the calendar, you know, of the meetings that the City of Chelsea has, the offices, city clerk, last year, January 6th, 2020, 13, January 27th. So does that mean like 30 days, 45 days? And also, you know, if you have a disability, or if you're ill, or if you have a death in the family, as I recently did this month, the Massachusetts General Law says unequivocally that you have 10 days, you know, for bereavement, you have 10 days. Now, whether the employer asks for proof afterwards, that's a little different, but you have 10 days to, you know, if bereavement occurs. What else? So, yeah, I also would say to think about the ADA disability laws as we have with the COVID that is still around, even though we do have a choice of three different vaccines that you can have, hopefully. Also inclement weather. I mean, if you want to set a, how can we say, want to set a rule for attendance, maybe that's one thing, but I do believe it needs to be better worded, and there are actual situations, you know? Because whatever rule you say, if somebody's going to abuse it, they're going to abuse it, but you have to set a healthy parameter. What else? And of course, we want to be reminded of the wording in, what, three paragraphs of the Chelsea City Charter of fair and just thinking, of, you know, fair and just and honest Chelsea conduct. And we need to be, right, we need to be reminded of that, because that's why people vote for you, to have, you know, good conduct and ethics, correct? All of us, right? So I believe that if you want to set rules for attendance, yeah, I could see that, as far as 30 or 25 for write-in or things of that sort. I don't know. I think that needs a little bit more research. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, at this time, we'll now move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is public speaking. At this time, if anyone would like to address the council on any of the items that are on the agenda, feel free. Please come up to the microphone, state your name, your address. You'll have four minutes.
Hello, everyone. Roberto Jimenez Rivera, 40 Eleanor Street, and at-large member of the Chelsea School Committee. I'm here to speak on the order to disapprove on borrowing and authorizing debt for a new building for the Northeast Vo-Tec. Some context for those watching at home, there was a presentation from their leadership prior to this meeting, and that is what I am responding to. The gentlemen from Northeast are asking us... The gentlemen from Northeast are asking us to prioritize 238 Chelsea students, over 6,600 students in Chelsea currently, in Chelsea Public Schools, and the over 45,000 residents of the city. Not only that, but they're asking us to prioritize over 1,000 students who are not from Chelsea over the people of the city. That is just preposterous and shows a complete lack of equity in the way that this new building is being funded. The gentlemen kept talking about the high-quality education that is provided at Northeast and honestly, I felt a little insulted because it has often felt that they were taking jabs of the work that we have been doing in Chelsea Public Schools while we have been severely underfunded. There are many things that I want and that I think Chelsea needs. We unfortunately have not been able to afford them even now before we are asked to spend this money. This is not about the people of Chelsea not supporting Northeast, but about us not wanting to bankrupt our city services by sending money so that kids from Winchester and Reading can have access to the school while the remaining 6,000-plus students who remain in Chelsea will not have access to any of those dollars for our district. Framing our inability to pay as not caring about these students is honestly a little disgusting. And when we talk about equity and they brought up that these communities pay more per people than we do, that is equity. We pay less because of the demographics and resources of our community and our students. Beyond that, I'm not sure if you've heard, Chelsea has been struggling with COVID more than other districts. To reference the metaphor that the Northeast Superintendent mentioned, it's a little hard to pay for braces for your child when you don't have enough money to put food on the table or keep a roof overhead. My other question is, how are we just now figuring out that this will be such a major problem? They said we've known about this for six years, so I'm just wondering why conversations were not had with state leaders to figure out how to make sure this project could be funded without bankrupting us? And if those conversations were had, what happened? I'm just curious. Our city cannot afford this and I would encourage the council to support the city manager's recommendation. I would also encourage everyone involved in this to seek relief from the state in any way, shape, or form since it looks like there are some situations and scenarios in which we will have to do this. There has to be a way to make this happen so that we don't prioritize 1,000 students from other cities over either the 6,000-plus students in Chelsea Public Schools or the 40-plus thousand residents of this city. Thank you.
My name is Marisol Santiago. I'm school committee representative for District Three. I live at 25 Hooper Street in Chelsea. I'm here today to also express extreme concern about the presentation that we were able to receive from the Superintendent of Northeast and also concerned about what's being proposed in front of us today. During my two years on school committee, one of the first tasks that I did was certainly ask about previous agreements and contracts and budget. As someone who attended Northeast Voc in my 10th, in 10th grade, I had moved from Chelsea High and transitioned to Northeast. I have two young children, young adults, 21 and 24, and had a situation where I once had to call Northeast for my daughter and was told that they were no longer accepting Chelsea kids. And this is something that I'm sure we all heard a lot about, growing up in the city of Chelsea and the concerns that we, I'm sure all of you have heard about as well. So, I started to research a little bit about their admissions and enrollment criteria. Currently, as a chair of the Policy and Procedure Subcommittee, I'm known for researching and digging and looking at where these agreements have been made. And, you know, I reached out to Mr. Michael Wall, who is the elected representative for Chelsea and have not received any returned phone call, any communications in the last month and a half. I asked the superintendent tonight for our representative and he did say that Mr. Wall has not been well, so I send my best regards to him and to his family. All that said, we have elected representatives that serve us in the Northeast Board and I think we should be asking questions as a community about that representation and when these decisions are being made. I don't know when this proposal came to light. There were numerous statements tonight saying that this was not the first time that the city heard of this. I don't know how, the details and credibility of that statement, but I think it is imperative that we also, as school committee members and city counselors, make sure that we're also reviewing these agreements and that we're able to come to the table and advocate for our community because we know what's best for our community. In particular, about the enrollments and admissions, just today, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees sent us a communication that DESI is in fact looking to review this. And it is a huge, huge win for the city of Chelsea. It is a huge win for all our communities across the state because our kids are often told that you need to have perfect A grades or that you can't have certain amount of absences. And it seems like it's really done a disservice and it's quite, pretty much a bias to discriminating against kids. I think it's something that we should continue to work on. I commend you all for doing your work on this current vote that's before you because it sounds like there's a lot to look at and consider. And I trust that that work will be done. But I think ultimately, as a school committee member, there's a lot of decisions that have to be reviewed with the Northeast Vocational School. And I think there needs to be conversations with our community, our community members as well about the vision of what we want so that we can make sure that our students have access to trades. And too, lastly, to the superintendent's comment about, you know, college is not cut out for every kid, we deserve to make our own choices about what's best for ourselves in this moment. My kids personally have attended a wide variety of programming that is not college-based, a traditional college-based. And my son has one of the, a very good paying job right now for himself that he worked hard and earns to train and prepare for. So, this notion that if we're not attending Ivy League somehow, we're not cut out to go, like if trades are not equally valuable, is also problematic framing. And we don't need all our, all our kids to serve access to better paying jobs that are also unionized. The trades have also shared with me that they're having a problem with enrollment and recruitment in the trades. So, we have students that are graduating from a lot of these schools and not even interested in working in the trades that they spent years studying. So, something needs to be done, something needs to be reviewed. And I'm glad that this is coming up before us so that we can make it better for our kids, for the students of Chelsea and our families. Thank you, guys.
My name is Norialista Jesus, 373 Crescent Ave. Although I do agree with our city counselor, I mean, our city manager, tonight is not a debate about what, who agrees with the city manager and who doesn't. Tonight, I think we are all in agreement that Chelsea needs a vocational school opportunity. I think that Chelsea desperately needs our vocational school opportunities to support our students that are, have been asking for this for years. I remember when we were transitioning our superintendent and we mobilized youth in our community and the questions that were being asked as Almi was being interviewed was, do you support vocational schools? We need vocational schools and vocational school access in our community. And so, this is something that I think everyone across the board is in support of. I think that the financing system is unfair because it assesses the suburban and city, it assesses the suburban and city communities in Northeast Metro District by population, not by income of the residents. This is different from Chapter 70, State Aid to Education, which distributes, it's based on the income of communities. We need new state revenue proposals to enable more funding for needed schools. As for Chelsea paying the 47 million to build this new school out of its budget, that is a heavy, heavy lift given the needs our city has for housing, education, healthcare, and just pandemic relief in general. Next time we have the opportunity to ask and to speak with the directors of this project, let's ask them, since the pandemic, has the number of applications decreased? Are our children enduring horrible conditions with housing, mental health, substance abuse, right? We need to make sure that we are focusing on the needs in our community and not diluting from that. And we need to make sure that we continue with our vision of equity and not equality. If Chelsea does not pass this, the question can be put to vote. All 12 communities of Northeast Metro serves. This includes Chelsea, Revere, Malden, and nine suburbs. If this passes, Chelsea has to pay the 47 million. Again, we support starting vocational courses at Chelsea High School, reforming the admissions policy at Northeast Metro, and finding ways to build the new needed Northeast Metro High School, but Chelsea can't afford the new school price tag. We need to focus on housing, jobs, and other emergency needs. I know you heard tonight that you should not want to go back to the times where urban children don't have access to equitable education or vocational school. Truth is, I lived in that time and it was my neighbors, it was my cousins and my loved ones that were still not able to make it into the classrooms because they were dealing with mental health, substance abuse, violence, and all the other things that are in our community. So, if we're not addressing the needs in our community to ensure that the youth can focus and even just applying and stepping foot into that school, then I don't, I don't think we should be investing this money to begin with. As parents deal with homelessness, overcrowded apartments, our community deals with mental health and substance concerns, we need to make sure that we acknowledge that COVID has increased all of that. We need to address the needs in our community, we need to be mindful with our budget, and we need to make sure that we are doing healthy practices of equity, not equality. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anna Haddingham. I'm a Youth Programs Manager at La Colaborativa. I have a couple of our amazing youth leaders with us who have done some deep thinking on this topic as well. As we, as we talk about equity and increasing access for Chelsea youth to quality vocational education, as an organization, we feel it's incredibly critical to emphasize a few steps that need to happen to make that possible. Number one, we, we hope that the Chelsea School Department will commit to our request to start the process of applying for Chapter 74 courses to be offered at Chelsea High School. To have locally accessible classes for a greater number of Chelsea youth would be a huge win for this community. And number two, as I believe Marisol touched on for a moment, we have deep concerns over the current admissions policy at Northeast Tech that uses an incredibly selective criteria that ranks eighth graders on grades, discipline, attendance record, guidance counselor recommendations in a way that no other public school does. And this has led to our English language learners, students with disabilities, students with colors, students that truly are the most vulnerable and are really the population that could benefit the most from vocational ed, they're the ones being left out. The school has until October 31st to submit a new policy and we have, we are hoping that if they would like to see our support for expansion, they take into account the need for more equity in the admissions policy. And because this is an issue, again, we have been fighting for a change to this policy for two years, I would like to invite Emily and Daniela to share some of their opinions as Chelsea youth on how this policy impacts Chelsea youth's self-esteem as well as their chances for accessing a better economic future.
My name is Emily Menjivar. I attend the Chelsea High School and to be honest, I find the policy of vocational school admissions to be very discriminatory against people of color. If I am a Spanish speaker and don't understand very much English, how is it possible that I pass my English-speaking classes with all flying colors? And most importantly, what happens when just because of my skin color, I get sent out of the office by my white teacher due to their bias about my own behavior? Before we think about expansion, why don't we just think about, well, the admissions policy first? Thank you.
My name is Daniela. I'm also from Chelsea High and what I think about is that the vocational school policy is incredibly unfair and it puts students of minority groups at a disadvantage with their education in comparison to their wealthier white students. Students of color getting singled out for misbehavior that occur within an entire group of students, they get harsher punishment and because of what they are losing the chance of a decent future. Victims of races, racism are affected by these policies because of the systems ruins their chances of getting into school that fits them. These students have been treated like criminals since their youth and in their future, they will become just like that. The school must get rid of the policy and begin with the lottery system that has always been available to them. Thank you.
My name is Rosemary Collel. I'm a member of the Chelsea School Committee and I live at 109 Sagamore Ave here in Chelsea. When I was listening to these gentlemen tonight, I felt like they were threatening our children. They were saying, if we don't come up with some money, Chelsea children will not get a proper education in vocation, the vocational school in Northeast. I can honestly say, before receivership, we did have vocation in the city of Chelsea because my two sons benefited from it. One is an auto body mechanic and one is a mechanic. They also had cooking classes, they also had sewing classes, they had all kinds of things for the children. We went into receivership and we lost all those things for vocation for the Chelsea kids. I was upset about it because I feel vocation is very, very important for these kids that want to learn how to survive after high school if they don't go to college. We helped so many children in vocation. Well, tonight I felt threatened by them, that they were telling us, if we don't come up with the money, Chelsea children will lose out on a vocation. I agree with Tom and I will stick by Tom and I will stick by the committee, whatever you vote for because Chelsea children have been very important to Mr. Ambrosino and the city council and to the school committee. We will make sure we do the right thing for the students in the city of Chelsea like we always did. Thank you very much.
Susan Backstrom again, 260 Clark Ave, number 807 in Chelsea. Yeah, I was just noticing that the, that the people who were presenting, were presenting a number of, that 800 students from Chelsea would be recipients of this kind of education. And then they put out the number that $4,200 for every student would be spent on them. And so, that equals 3.36 million, not 317 million and change, nor 47 million. So, these, these two people who came as experts, their math was incredibly inaccurate. And so, for ID, ID 22F7, their, their math doesn't add up and so, perhaps their education doesn't add up. And then, the other thing that I'd like to speak on is ID 22. Okay. A general comment not regarding to ADA voting or the school vocational committee or vocational opportunity, whatever that that was, ID 22F7, is that we in Chelsea should, you know, strongly consider, you know, engaging in ranked choice voting for, you know, these, these offices so that, so that we can, even with low numbers or low turnout, we can still have the one who with a majority would be insured of a, of the seat. And so, just to, just to put that forward, I know that perhaps it's been discussed and rejected, but I'd like to put it forward again. And, and, yeah, it would also make numerical votes, all, all votes count. And so, yeah, with that. Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's, that's everything that I had. Thanks.
Thank you once again. Alexander Floyd Vargas, 260 Clark Ave, Permanente Seven in Chelsea. It was also not only Chelsea being wonderful during the pandemic, and it still is here in terms of the Chelsea Pandemic Response Team and helping out all the citizens. That was wonderful to see, and it gave me a lot of faith in human nature. But also, well, and also, we still should have all methods to help children learn. We still should have as many methods as we can to have people come here and communicate, whether by internet, Zoom, phone, whatever method it is, because they live here and they're entitled to have a voice and entitled to be heard. And so I feel that it was wonderful to see that in Chelsea, the Chelsea Pandemic Response Team and almost the whole city come together to unite, to help, instead of waiting for everyone else to do it. And also to have city councilors who were ill, that they were able to, you know, come back and participate in the meetings as they should because that is not only federal law, but it also is ADA law. So thank you very much.
Seeing no other speakers, we'll now move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is the approval of the minutes. Regular meeting, uh, regular meeting minutes of October fourth. Do we have a motion? Counsel Brown asked that we accept and file the minutes from our October fourth meeting under suspension. Seeing no objection. We have a communication from our city manager received regarding the streetlights. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the city order requesting information on how streetlights are fixed in this city. I have responded in similar council orders several times in the past, however, I will provide another brief overview. The city owns and is responsible for all of its streetlights. However, the wiring and electrical infrastructure for such light remains owned by EverSource. The city outsources maintenance of its streetlights to third-party vendors. Currently, the streetlight vendor is Dagel Electric Construction Corp. When a streetlight is reported out, Dagel is dispatched to attempt to repair. If the problem is a streetlight itself, Dagel is typically able to perform the repair in a short order. However, if the problem is underground wiring, then the city must contact EverSource and wait for EverSource to repair. So if a streetlight remains inoperable for a long time and after a report of a problem with the light, it almost always means the problem requires EverSource intervention. If the reported problem is the streetlight is remaining day, lit all day, that is typically a problem with a sensor. That kind of problem is, is a problem that Dagel is usually able to remedy on its own. I encourage the city council to report to DBW all such instances, and we should, should be able to quickly resolve. Counsel Recupero. You have one minute, sir.
Many times, we call about this. So if the problem is simple, that they can fix it themselves, that come the lights are still on. I know a light on my street has been on for over seven months. I know many other lights that don't even come on. So that's, you're saying here, we have the company called Dagel. So why don't they go out and fix it? If the problem is just a simple solution, it should be fixed. If it doesn't have anything to do with major electrical issues from underneath, the streetlight should be fixed. So it shouldn't take seven, eight months for one light to be fixed. So are we going to start seeing this Dagel company go out and replace the sensors wherever they're at? Thank you.
Next communication is a communication from the city manager regarding flooding issues. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to a recent city council order requesting the city to investigate flooding issues at the following intersections, Sixth and Arlington, Everett and Carter, Vale and Carter. With respect to the intersection of Sixth and Arlington, the city's Water, Sew, and Drainage Department will clean and televise the drain lines in this area. We believe these lines are in reasonably good shape but lack sufficient capacity during heavy rainfall. Over time, as the city makes downstream improvements to our system, including separation of combined water and drain lines, we hope this capacity problem will improve. The situation is similar in the Everett Ave, Carter Street, and Vale Street areas. During heavy rains, especially at high tides, these areas can back up with experienced local street flooding. Again, continued improvements to the system downstream will eventually help the situation. In the meantime, the city will clean and televise the lines to ensure there are no impediments to proper drainage. Counsel Robinson.
There's no objections.
Seeing none. We have a communication from city manager Ambrosino regarding parking lots located at Fifteen Williams and Two Four Pembroke. Dear councilors, in recent order, you requested that I provide you with a plan to reacquiring the parking lots that the city previously leased at Fifteen Williams and Two Four Pembroke Street. These lots were used by the police department for parking during the day, and certain spots were available to residents at night. With the opening of the police parking area in the new lot under the Tobe Bridge, these leased parcels were no longer necessary for police parking, and the leases were terminated. As I mentioned several times in the past, any process of acquisition of real property by the city must start with an appraisal. However, I suggest that before you present an order to draft an order to appropriate the funds for necessary appraisal, we meet to discuss this matter in subcommittee. Because of the acquisition would involve the need for eminent domain, a vote that requires a supermajority, we should consider a subcommittee, both about whether the acquisition makes sense for the city and whether there is widespread consensus on the council for such action. Counsel Brown. You may. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for getting back this year. This is obviously something that we can do to help the residents out in that community when it's summer, Lower Tremont, Williams Street. So I know it has a tag that it has to be considered for eminent domain, but again, this is a favorable, favorable event that we can actually work to try to help the community receive some parking and have some reliable parking in that area. I'm looking forward to the discussion, and hopefully, we can get that done for the community. Thank you.
The next communication from the city manager, fines for fireworks. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the request for the number of fines issued this year for the use of illegal fireworks. According to Police Chief Brian Kais, the police department did not issue any fines for fireworks this summer. Nonetheless, Chief Kais believes strongly that the new ordinance with its threat of larger financial penalties was an extremely helpful tool for his officers as they engaged with residents of, on fireworks complaints. The chief confirmed that fireworks complaints this year were substantially reduced from the numbers in the summer of 2020. The chief is willing to appear before the council and subcommittee to discuss the matter further if the council desires.
Counsel Taylor.
I'd like to accept and file the communication under suspension. If there's no objections, I'd like to speak on it, please.
You have the floor.
So I'm not entirely surprised that this was the case. I did have a conversation with the city manager and with the chief of police regarding this issue. And I believe what they both told me in good faith that the ordinance, the threat of, of larger fines was instrumental in reducing the number of people setting off fireworks, especially in the middle of the night. So I accept their explanation as to why there were no fines issued. And I, I don't think it's probably necessary for Chief Kais to come again before us on this matter. But I would say that in the future, if this problem persists, I would, you know, expect the police to, to issue some fines if necessary. Apparently, it wasn't, it wasn't necessary this year. I think we can all agree that it was, there was a lot less fireworks this year, and there wasn't the disruption to people's sleep during the night that occurred in 2020. So, thank you.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you. Thank the chief and thank the city manager and also a good colleague for making this resolution, this motion. And also, some of the community residents had fought very hard. Beth Novak was one. We had a lot of folks, especially up in Admirals Hill, where that part of the year when the pandemic was going on, it was really somewhat of a up rule situation, where we've heard a lot of, a lot of fireworks. But, you know, again, also kudos and, and big thanks to our Sammy Mojica, who's away on sick leave. He worked very hard on this initiative. And I do believe that when we came back and Todd, I mean, Counsel Taylor wanted to aggressively attach a fine, significant fine to this, a lot of folks got the message that we were not going to tolerate this, that we were going to really pursue this. The police, they jumped right on it. They were on it throughout, but when the fine was attached to it, I think the public got the message. And I also think that as things have progressed and died down with some of the concerns and some of the pandemic in the past year, that we've actually got some really good nights of rest and some good nights of peace up there. So I want to thank everyone that participated in making this happen. It's very good for the city. As you know, it went as far as Admirals Hill to Bloomingdale, way up into Prattville. And we finally seem like we got some meat underneath it. Thank you.
Counsel Angel Lopez.
I'm in a hill. I guess I'm in a hill doesn't have, didn't have all the damage from the fireworks that we had in District Five, District Six, and District Four. I think we're, you know, I, I understand that, you know, they went and talked to the people, but I think we, we can still do the fines. In my district, there was a lot of fireworks. Actually, two weeks ago, there was fireworks. You know, I, I do not agree why no one person got a fine when they, there were fireworks everywhere. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to the next communication. We have a communication regarding the FY twenty-two park grant for Quigley Park. We have, dear councilors, I'm writing to you to update the city's park grants mission for the renovation of Quigley Park and request the city approve, city council approve the necessary funding for this project. Recently, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs notified the city and the Department of Housing and Community Development has secured a park grant for Quigley Park pending execution of the state grant and fulfillment of all pre-award program requirements. For this grant, the proposed renovations of Quigley Park include replacement of the playground's rubber surfacing, introduction of new playground equipment, installation of a new water feature and splash pad, refurbishment of the playfields, installation of new site furniture and lighting, and reconstruction of all site utilities. Once completed, the modernization, modern, oh, sorry, modernized playground will better serve our city's youth, mitigate heat and poor air quality, and increase the quality of life of residents, a goal highlighted in the city's 2017, 2024 Open Space and Recreation Plan. The city will complete its design of these improvements by third, June thirtieth, 2022. Counsel Robinson asked that we waive the reading. We'll have something under New Business. Thank you.
Accept and file.
Accept and file. We have a communication from city manager Tom Ambrosino regarding information on the workforce development expenditures. Counselor Robinson, are you asking to waive the reading?
I'm asking to waive the reading and accept and file a communication under suspension. Now, I would just like for the city manager to get back to us as to how many people actually were placed in jobs in regards to this grant and money that we appropriated for helping our residents here in the community.
We have another communication received from the city manager regarding, regarding the fiscal year 2022 tax rates. Dear councilors, I'm writing to request that Chelsea City Council schedule a meeting on a subcommittee on conferences on Monday, November eighth, 2021, or a more convenient date soon after for the purpose of discussing fiscal year 2022 tax rates. Similar to past years, my goal at the meeting is to provide a PowerPoint presentation and then answer. Yes, thank you. Counsel Vido asked that we accept and file the communication under suspension. We'll be setting a, a subcommittee meeting on November eighth at six P.M. And a public hearing to be scheduled for the 2022 tax rates the following city council meeting. We have a communication from C. Gabriel Santiago Esquire regarding internal police matters. Counsel Robinson.
I would move to waive the reading and accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
But I'm not able to see.
We have a, a communication from an, a attorney who was representing a, a client and states that he had a bad experience at, when trying to get some paperwork at the police station. It was a communication that was already emailed to all city councilors, forward to the city police department, and he has responded such. Anyone has any inquiries on the city council, I respectfully ask that you contact Chief Brian Kais, who's handled the matter. We have a communication from the parking clerk, Jeanette Sutron White, regarding approval actions on October fifth, 2021 Traffic and Parking Commission. Do we have a motion?
Suspension if there are no objections.
If there's any objection to anything on the agenda, we can accept and file. Seeing none, that matter passes. We're now moving on to unfinished business. Second readings.
Second readings. We have the reappointment to the Chelsea Tree Board under the second reading pursuant to Section four-two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea. I'm going to recommend the reappointment of Chelsea Tree Board of Ms. Denise Ortega, seventy-three Essex Street, Department One, Chelsea, for a new three-year term expiring on September twenty-fourth, 2024.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
Counsel Robinson asked for a roll call vote on the re, the reappointment of Ms. Denise Ortega. Clerk, call roll.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez. Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
And Counsel Zabit.
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed. Motion adopted.
We have a next communication from the city manager regarding the appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund of Alexis Turgeon, forty-three Eleanor Street. What is the wish of the council?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
Clerk, call roll.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero. Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez. Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Zabit.
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed. Motion adopted. Okay, now you have the vote on the construction.
We'll now have the order introduced. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding the vote on the construction of Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational High School. Counsel Robinson asked that we waive the reading.
Waive the reading, accept and file a communication. There is an order, that's the next order of business coming up.
Okay. We now have an order introduced by Counsel Abadina regarding that the Chelsea City disapproves the three hundred seventeen million, four hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars re borrowing in depth authorized on September ninth, 2021 by the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School District Committee for the purpose of paying of paying costs of designing, engineering, constructing, and equipping the new Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School and related athletic fields, and expressly does not authorize the payment of any share of the district's debt for this purpose. Counsel Robinson?
Adopt this order on a roll call vote as written.
If you want to pay the millions of dollars, the vote would be yes or no?
No.
No.
If you, if we want to, this order disapproves of that spending. So, a yes vote is saying no to?
To payment.
A yes disapproves.
A yes disapproves.
Yes is no.
Yes is no.
Got it.
Roll call.
On a roll call vote?
Yes, on a roll call vote. If there are no objections.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor? Yes. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted.
We have a communication received from Peter Rosetti, Secretary of Northeast Regional Vocational School, regarding the appropriation of $317,422,620 for the purpose of paying the cost of the designing, engineering, construction, and equipment of the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School.
Waive the reading and accept and file a communication under suspension as we just voted on it.
Now, moving on to home rule petition introduced by Counselor Avellaneda regarding the purpose, proposed charter amendments recommended by the Charter Review Committee. A copy of the home rule petition can be found at the Chelsea City Council office. We will now have, we have a couple of amendments on this. At first, I say that we have to make a motion on the original home rule petition.
Move to adopt. And then you can offer your amendments.
Yep.
I want to, I just want to make sure that we're doing it in a manner that's legal. Move to adopt the petition on a roll call vote?
Roll call, okay.
Yes. The original.
The original.
The original. Then we're going to go?
Now, you offer your amendments.
Now, we're offering the amendments. We'll vote on the amendments as they come, one by one.
One by one, yeah.
The document or the home petition is on the floor right now, and we are reviewing the amendments as proposed, yea and nay on each one.
Each one.
Each one, yeah. First up, the First Amendment introduced by Counsel Robinson regarding inserting, in part, legislative section 2-1, composition, eligibility, election, and term. There shall be a city council composed of nine members, which shall exercise the legislative powers of the city. Four members to be known as councils-at-large shall be nominated and elected by and, by the voters-at-large. Five members to be known as ward councilors shall be nominated and elected by and from the voters of each district. One such district councillor shall be elected from each of the five wards into which the city is divided in accordance with section 7-4. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
No, do you have a speech if you want to say anything? We haven't done roll call yet.
Say again.
Do you make a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt.
Would you like to speak on it?
Yes.
You have the floor, sir.
I'm offering this amendment, and people are saying, why? In the history of the city of Chelsea, for those who are newcomers to our community, there have always been nine members serving on the city council. Four-at-large, and there were five wards, and in those wards, there were precinct one, precinct two. The wards were spread out that gave a number of people an opportunity to be able to run for council in those areas. I could be on one end of the ward, and someone could be on the other end of the ward and would be able to have a runoff or not be afraid of competition and being out there to work, to be elected. And if you want to go back and look at the history of when there were nine members on the board, eighty percent of the voters came out to vote in Chelsea. And if you look at what we're bringing out today as voters, we're lucky to get twenty percent. Chelsea was a community where every state office holder made their way to Chelsea seeking votes to help them get elected statewide. And here we are. In the past few elections, we've had a number of districts that have been no challenges. And if you feel that is good competition, or I just can't, I don't understand it, I think this offers a much wider opportunity for many more people to be able to get involved in this process. And that's my opinion on it, and that's what I stand by.
Counselor Recupero and Counselor Garcia.
I disagree with my fellow counselor. I don't think it's a good thing. You want to have more people involved. You want to have more people represent. If you do that, what you're doing is you're suppressing the representation of the people. You're eliminating more people getting into the pool. So, what is the purpose? You want more representation, more people to come out. When you limit the pool, you have a small amount of people. You want more representation. I don't think this is a good thing. If they thought this was a bad thing, they wouldn't have do it in the beginning. They did it to make sure that the people of our city had good representation. So, it doesn't serve its purpose for us to go out about and say, okay, we're going to cut them. Why? So, that means you want less representation? I believe you should have more. The people deserve more, and everybody should have an opportunity to go out there and become a city councillor if they wish to do so. Thank you.
Counselor Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief. I said this before, and I talked about it more extensively as a chairwoman of the Charter Committee. We discussed this, and I actually would also like to point that, point that the members of that committee, the majority of the members of that committee voted against this. And I would like to also remind members of this body that, including residents of that committee, voted against this. And I will say this, if we talk about educating the newcomers, I think this really diminishes the hard work of the residents that fought so hard for representation in this body, in this council. Because I think I should remind you, as a baby of the 90s, that it was hardworking residents and civic leaders that worked so hard to actually get many of us here and have representation of every district. So, let's not diminish the work of our residents that worked so hard to make sure that there's representation in this community. So, I will be voting against this because, again, as my colleague just said, it is so important to be inclusive and to really show that this body represents the people that we serve. Thank you.
Point of information?
That didn't pass.
Counsel Robinson is clarifying or asking that the clarification, that the vote that was taken on this matter in the subcommittee of the Charter Committee was a six-to-six. At this time, the clerk, I'm sorry, Counselor Vido?
It was six-to-six, but it didn't pass, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what matters. Okay, so, all I want to say here is that in order to represent this community, it's, you think about the diversity in the city, it's so important for everyone here in the city to have representation. And what we saw in the past was when we had wards and at-large members, was that the majority of the at-large members came from one part, more affluent part of this community, representing the needs of people that really needed representation. I believe that this is a bit irresponsible because it kind of goes backwards after we've clearly evolved from there. So, I would absolutely be voting with my colleagues, and my sister councillor spoke so eloquently, I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, we'll now take a roll on the amendment as proposed by Counselor Robinson. A yes vote would just support.
Adopt the amendment and no vote would be to deny it. Counselor Vido?
No.
Counselor Avellaneda?
No.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Garcia?
No.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
No.
Counselor Robinson? Counselor Rodriguez? Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
And Counselor Zabit?
No.
Two in favor and nine opposed, the motion is defeated. We have the next amendment introduced by Counselor Avellaneda. Amendment to insert in Part II Legislative Section 2-1, composition, eligibility, and election and term, any write-in candidate must receive at least 25 votes to be elected.
What is the wish of the council, Counselor Avellaneda?
Motion to adopt on a roll call vote, if I may speak on it.
You have the floor, counselor.
Thank you. To my colleagues and to the public, the suggested change that I have here is that if anyone writes, does a writing campaign, that there be at least a 25-vote minimum for this to happen. Now, there were some comments both prior to and tonight that we don't have any sort of limits or requirements on numbers in our charter, or that it somehow impedes democracy. But in actuality, that is not true. Our charter, number one, requires each candidate who wants to run for office to have to get a minimum of 50 signatures in order to run. Number two, if two people run for a district office and perchance the one who has won the election leaves office, the requirement for a charter for the second person who ran is that in order to replace that person, they had to have received twenty percent of the vote. So, even if you ran and got second place, you still need a requirement of said votes to assume that position. So, if someone got 200 votes and the next person got five votes, that person who got five votes does not get in. Also, section eight of our charter, if the citizens of this community want to file a petition to present an item on our agenda, you need 150 signatures in order to present that and be placed in front of this council for it to be voted, 150 signatures. If the residents of this community want to have a referendum question placed on the ballot on our local city election, they have to collect twenty percent of the number of registered voters in our community to be placed on the ballot. So, we do have requirements. Now, why did I put this foot forward? I just think that we should have some sort of bottom bare number for a person who's going to run so that it's not anarchy, it's not something crazy, it's well thought out. And let's say perchance someone runs a sticker campaign, and they don't happen to get enough votes. And again, that seat, whether it be a, doesn't, is vacated or no one wins, at least when it comes to the body, the city council, and then we have to appoint them, at least we say, hey, the person at least tried and had an appointment that was interest, they will be considered for that office. But to have someone, and we had this happen, and this is what I'm trying to guard against, we had someone who literally just went into a voting pool, no one else was running, put their name on, and won. How do we know, without any public discourse, the voters had no chance to meet the candidate, anything of that nature, that that would have been a good way to run government? That doesn't make any sense. So, I just think that if we have at least a bare minimum for our sticker campaign, it makes, it makes common sense here, especially since we already have other numbers that are required in order to run democracy. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Counselor Todd Taylor and then Counselor Brown.
So, I rise to support this amendment, although I don't think it goes far enough. I believe that it should really be 50, since that's what's set out for the number of signatures that's in the charter. The idea that this is somehow limiting democracy is absurd. These are the rules set down in the charter, and I think that we do, for the reasons that Counselor Avellaneda talked about, we've had problems on the school committee. I think, I think that we need to have some sort of minimum bar that people need to reach in order to assume office, or the city council would need to step in and appoint somebody as we are the elected body of this city. So, you know, I think that this is basically the bare minimum that we should do, and I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Vice Chairwoman. I think we're missing it here. There's a few things going on here, and we're somewhat kind of getting confused a bit. I work in the office of Secretary of State, where my title is Election Specialist. So, when we talk about a write-in candidate and we talk about access to a ballot, if you go into your ballot, if you get your ballot, you get this spot to say write-in candidate, it indicates that you can write someone's name in. If we back up a bit, if we have a primary or preliminary election, which is usually in September, if there's no name on the ballot for a candidate or a certain office, then for someone to be qualified for that office, you would have to get the required amount of number of signatures, which allows you to be on the ballot. So, in this case, it would be 50. So, preliminary election, primary election, however you want to call it, you need to get what it takes to get your name printed on the ballot. Now, when you go to an election, which is normally the general election, they call it the general election, it's simple. Democracy is the highest vote getter. So, whoever gets the highest votes wins the election. I understand what we're trying to say here because what we've been dealing with, we want to say, hey, if someone is not running for city councillor, district councillor, school committee, what you have in the primary, you know that. So, this is the opportunity where you specifically state that if someone wants to be nominated to the office for that office, they would have to get required amount of signatures to be, have their name placed on the ballot for the general election, which is the November election. Then at that stage, regardless, it's still a write-in candidacy available. It's the highest vote getter. So, we have to be careful what we're saying to the public. So, at this point, backing up, in September, where the charter states we have to have an election, you know that there's no candidate. So, our mission should be, okay, if you want to run for office as a write-in, you need to get this to be on. Give you an example, if you run for Ward and Town Committee or State Committee man or person, you have to get the number required in the primary to get your name on. You just can't go out and say, you know, it takes 50 signatures, I got 47. You're not declared a winner. You would have to run again in November and get the highest vote getter. So, that's the easy, and that's the clearest, and that's the way that democracy run. I understand what my colleague is saying. He's saying if it gets past those steps, why don't we make a threshold to say that you have to get a certain number? I was one to argue for whatever it took to get your name printed, which was 50. Today is 25. Either way we go, I believe if you're going to do it right, that's the language we should rear, because she put this into the charter for 10 years. I think we should actually put the right language in at the right place. So, if we're just looking to run as a write-in for the primary, you need to get what it takes to get your name printed on the ballot. In the general election, it should be clear, the highest vote winner receives the office. We've had that in the past, but that would take away from now, someone just getting two or three votes, because folks know at the primary, there's no one's running, we're going to get my name on the ballot, and then you generate some activity. So, I understand what we're trying to say. We're trying, we're a little discouraged because we don't have people running for office, but we just can't change the playing field just because we're discouraged. We have to stay with the democracy and how the democracy wanted to be run. Thank you.
Counselor Vido? So, there's a lot of truths to what folks are saying, and I just want to just specify, if, when we run for office and we get our sheets and we get, we have to if, when, when we run for office and we get our sheets, and we get, we have to collect at least fifty signatures, we are printed on the ballot. I don't know why we're acting like running a write-in campaign is, is easy. It's, it's, there's so many disadvantages if you misspell the name, if you don't get the address, those votes don't count. And so the burden would fall on the person running the sticker campaign. I understand what the council president said with respect to, if someone steps down, then the next person has to have at least twenty percent in order to serve, but that person would have had run, their name would have been on the ballot, already would have had the advantage of possibly getting twenty percent of that if it was an actual contested race. There is no threshold that we are supposed to meet when we vote. It's not like, oh, you have to have at least this many votes so you can get into office, so then why would we impose that? I think that it absolutely undermines democracy. I think that, you know, whether you win by one vote or two votes, it doesn't matter, that's how it works, majority wins. And who are we to implement or impose anything that would, that would not allow that democratic process to happen? So I would absolutely be voting against this. I think this is absolutely government overreach. I also believe that it takes the power away from the electorate, who is to decide who sits up here, and puts the power back on us, and it feels a little power hungry to me. So I would be voting against this. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Counselor Robinson?
I think if we look at the past, we've had plenty openings on a school committee where we didn't have candidates. And people would be able to sit back, and when it became time for the election, to be able to submit their name, or a couple names, and be elected to this body. So the fact of the matter is, if there were no candidates, then it flips back to this board and the school committee to be able to select those folks by advertising for those districts that are vacant, and then having people send us resumes, and have to come here and present why they want to be on the school committee. Question is, why didn't you put your name on the ballot in the beginning if you're really interested in running? That's my only statement.
Any other councils wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we move to roll call.
Yes would be to accept the amendment as written, and no vote would be to deny. Counselor Vido?
No.
Counselor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
No.
Counselor Garcia?
No.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
And Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
One, two, three, four in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven opposed, the motion is defeated.
Now we move on to the second item on our agenda, which is an amendment.
No, no, we've got another.
Oh, we have another one.
Oh, yeah, we've got another item.
The amendment.
Yeah, we have the next amendment introduced by Counselor Zabit.
No, that's number four. We're on amendment for Zabit.
They went off and off.
Counselor Zabit, go ahead.
Is it okay?
Yes, you can read it.
Introduced by Counselor Zabit. Amendment to insert in Part Two Legislative Section Two-Dash-Three, General Powers and Duties. Council members shall forfeit their office by failing to attend three consecutive regular meetings of the council without being excused by the council. Members of the council may ask to be excused by following the procedure described in this paragraph. The member shall contact the city council president prior to the meeting and state the reason for their inability to attend the meeting. If the member is unable to contact the city council president, the member shall contact the city council vice president following the call of water. The president or vice president shall inform the council of the member's absence, state the reason for such absence, and inquire if there is a motion to excuse the member. This motion shall be non-debatable. Upon passes of such motion by a majority of the members present, the absent member shall be considered excused, and the city court will make an appropriate notation in the minutes.
What is the wish of the council, Counselor Zabit? What's your wish? What's your motion?
Motion to adopt under roll call.
Adopt under suspension, or adopt under roll call?
Under roll call.
So Counselor Zabit moves to adopt under roll call, and you wish to speak on it. You have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to apologize if anybody felt, and obviously people did, because I heard the constituents speak about this, and my fellow city councilors, I want to apologize if the, this amendment struck people as being discriminatory, which was, which was certainly not my intent, and I agree that it certainly could be rewarded. My intent was to have established certain rules, which would help, one would hope, to promote a certain amount of respect, which at times seems to be lacking in terms of how city councilors approach the seat that they are sitting in, that they've been voted into by the people of the city, and the responsibility of being present and thinking about that for the future. And if this is in the charter, at least for the next ten years, the idea that when one is voted into office, it is their responsibility to be present as they are able. So I repeat, I in no way was suggesting that a city councillor who is unable to attend a meeting for health reasons, et cetera, be they mental health, physical health, anything like that, a death in the family, it is in no way was I proposing that that not be allowed. So I, again, I must say that I apologize if that was viewed as being discriminatory, and that my intention was, as I said, to try to establish a certain sense of decorum.
Okay, I see. Counselor Vidal?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I think when we start off in order by apologizing, we're in big trouble. As someone who is just coming back to a city council meeting, only because I'm in town temporarily to visit my family after suffering a tragic violence in my family, and almost losing my life to COVID, I can't explain how offensive this order is. I also want to explain that all of us here, whether I get fourteen hundred votes, or someone here gets twenty-two, are all equal. There is not one councillor here that has more power over than the other, with the exception of the council president, as we all vote. And even then, we are all still equal. The idea that anyone would have to come to the fellow council and ask mommy and daddy to get permission as to whether or not they get excused is, is, is actually very disturbing. It is an ableist attitude. We should be ashamed that we would even think that we can undermine the electorate. It is dumb. When I was council president, what I had our administrative assistant do was keep attendance, because it is the electorate who decides who we, who sits in these chairs. And so then we could present to them what the attendance is, and let the electorate decide. There is not one person here that gets to decide what the other does. I am disgusted at this, I will be voting absolutely no on this, and I'm ashamed, I get, that the pandemic has clouded the way that we communicated here, that we communicate here, and the way that we share information. But the power tripping that I'm seeing here, and the way that we want to step in and make decisions for other people, is absurd, and it's very disappointing.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? I see Counselor Recupero, and after Counselor Taylor can go. Go ahead, Counselor Recupero.
I believe what my councillor said.
No, it wasn't me, go ahead.
We are elected officials, we're not schoolchildren. We're grown people, we're grown men and women. We shouldn't have to, we answer to the people, the people put us here. And they're the only ones, they get rid of us. And if, for some unfortunate reason, you cannot come, I guess all of us, if I couldn't come, I would definitely say, this is the reason why. And I wouldn't turn around and say, well, I'm not going to come, I don't feel like coming. Instead, you intend to do that, why do you run for office? You shouldn't run for office. Your purpose is to run, to work for the people, and do their job. You're not, we're not children. When I was a child in school, I was disciplined from my parents. This is more or less a discipline telling you, okay, if you miss three meetings, you're going to get rid of you. That's not what you, that's not a democracy. Democracy is done by the people. The people decide when you leave, not us. I don't believe we should have the right to determine who gets, who goes and who stays. The people decide, let them decide, not us. We are not the people, we are the elected official of the people, and that's our job, is to work for the people. Thank you.
Counselor Todd Taylor?
I agree with Counselor Vido's assessment of this. I don't believe that it was intended to be discriminatory, I believe that. I do think that we should all have as good attendance as we are able. We were elected to do a job, we should attend the meetings, and subcommittee meetings. And I do believe that it is the voters, and the voters alone, who should decide this. But I would encourage the voters to look at this issue and elect people that can do the job, elect people that are committed to doing the job. School committee, city council, whatever it is, that, you know, people deserve representation. And this was a reason why I don't think that it's up to this body to try to, you know, remove a councillor because of attendance. The voters put you here, the voters can take you out. And, and I firmly believe that that's the way of things. That being said, I do think for further consideration, at another time, this, every legislative body has the ability to censure a member of its body, and that should, or can, you know, could be put into the charter at a later date, and if people really want to do that, then that's what I would suggest.
Thank you, Counselor. I see Counselor Robinson.
I will not be supporting this order. I believe that when the people elect you, they put you here for a reason. And if you can't do the job that they sent you here for, they will not vote for you the next time around. I think that we, the council does have the power to censor candidates. Yeah, we're not the, I know there is a rule in the school committee that they put in, put in place because of the absenteeism now, what's happening at the school department. But I could not support this measure, because I feel I'd be taking away a vote from the people in this community.
Any other councillor? Counselor Brown? Counselor Brown, yes.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Again, I would not be supporting this method. I don't believe that this here was put in a bad spirit, but it's just not a good order. It's not a good order because of what we've dealt with in the past year and a half, and also because we have had folks that's been out. But I don't, I also believe that we don't need to take additional attendance. There's no reason to take additional attendance. One of the first things we do here, we salute the flag and we take attendance. So to say that, you know, this order's out of order, the order of taking additional attendance so we can have record to show that who attends and who does not attend meetings, that's public records. I believe that's something that we're getting away from, really, the respect for the body of the city council, or the school committee members, or whoever is elected. We take an oath to show up, to do the job the best of our ability, to show up, to do the job the best of our ability. If we have something that does not allow us, normally, a lot of folks will call and say, I can't be at the meeting tonight because of whatever. And if it's an extended period, it should be out of respect to the office members, so folks wouldn't be guessing about, you know, is this person okay, is this person, because everyone should have some care and concerns about their fellow council members. So to say this is out of order, so is, you know, taking additional attendance is out of order, because it's something that you can say, well, look, I showed up this many times, this person did not. It's public records, we show up, we took an oath to show up. We don't need to be taking records and checking each other. We need to be working together and try to present ourselves as a full body with respect for one another, for the residents that elected us to get the job done for the city of Chelsea. So this past year, we tried to go into meetings to get conversation, to let us work together. We still need to work on that as a body, to, so we don't have to have this type of discussion on the floor and know what's expected of us. Once we take that oath, we say, I'm going to do the best to my ability, check the oath if you haven't taken it, and I'm going to show up. That's a part of being elected to the city council. If someone gets sick, or someone is unable to attend, if that person has a relationship and feels that that person can say, hey, I won't be in because of my job, or because of this, that's out of respect for us. I mean, I don't, but this is how we get blowed out of order when we put stuff in here, because now you try to split us as city council members, and that's not good policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, so now we move on to, yes. So the request in front of us is to withdraw this order. Anyone object? No? Okay, we move on to the. So if, let me get point of clarification here.
She can, she can just withdraw.
So if the, if the author of the order, the amendment presented before us, which is to withdraw, it withdraws with no debate?
Right.
And no objection?
Right.
Okay. We move on to the next item.
Next item, amendment number four, introduced by Counsel Avellaneda. Amendment to insert in Part Three, School Committee, Section Three-One, Composition, Eligibility, and Election and Term, Powers and Duties. Any write-in candidate must receive at least twenty-five votes to be elected.
What is the wish of the counsel, Counselor Avellaneda? We have Counselor Avellaneda moves to withdraw this motion.
Okay, the next amendment introduced by Counsel Recupero.
No, we have, yeah, actually, yes. Amendment introduced by Counsel Avellaneda, Part Seven, City Elections for Preliminary and General, Section Seven-Dash-One. Number five.
Number five is introduced by Counsel Recupero.
No, number five is introduced by Counsel Avellaneda, it's on our agenda. I understand that, but on our agenda, it's.
Number five.
Number five, amendment introduced by Counsel Avellaneda. The preliminary.
Okay, let's reverse it. Okay, the amendment to insert in Part Seven, City Elections for Preliminary and General, Section Seven-One. The city shall make available to registered voters the ability to vote early in person weekdays during the preceding week and second Saturday preceding the regular city election held in November.
What is the wish of the counsel, Counselor Avellaneda?
Motion to adopt on a roll call vote, and if I may speak on it.
You may speak on it, Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. One of the things that I tried during the Charter Review Committee was introduce a change in the Charter that would try to increase voter activity. And at the time, I suggested, you know, maybe we even considered moving the date from, or rather, the devoting day from Tuesday to Saturday, to take into account the fact that we are a working-class city, and that Tuesday during the regular day between all the things that are going on, and having it just on that one day is difficult for many of our residents to participate. So I thought, well, Saturdays for many is a day off, we don't have to worry about the schools and such, and it may make more sense. But then, it was found out during the debate that it goes counter to state law, because that's something that towns can do, but not cities per our, where we are structured. However, as you saw last year during COVID, we actually had early voting. And in our, in our city, to deal with what was going on with COVID, we allowed early voting the whole week before, the Saturday before, leading up to the Tuesday election. It allowed people to vote on more than one day. And if we're trying to get more involvement, we have to take into account the different schedules that are out there in our community, and, and whether you have kids, and trying to get care, and all your different, different hours. Now you have a whole week, and maybe that'll increase voter participation, and that's the goal here. This is not, this is in-person voting. So it, we're actually going to do it again this upcoming So it, we're actually going to do it again this upcoming, this upcoming election, and I'm just replicating it so that it's not just a COVID event, but we do it for the next 10 years. And that is, the Saturday before the election, you get an opportunity to come into City Hall and vote. That week before the election, Tuesday, from Monday to Friday, you can come to City Hall and you can vote. And then on that Tuesday, it's, as we always do it, you go to the voting polls. But I think if we're going to try to increase voter participation, we have to come up with different ways, and having a longer schedule makes sense for us. I know for all my voter activists out there, think about having five days to be able to hit all the senior buildings and give rides to everybody who can and work the phones more and just make sure that we have highest voter participation. That is key. So I hope my colleagues will agree with me and vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Any other counsel wish to speak on it? Counselor Vido.
Good idea, and I just want to congratulate the maker of the amendment. I think that rather than talking about how many people are coming to meetings and talking about a threshold of 25, we need to actively be figuring out how we try to increase civic engagement in our community, and this is a great way of doing that. I'll be voting in favor.
Any other counsel wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we move to a roll call.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Abadina?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Cooperrow?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
Love and favor, and opposed motion is adopted.
Counselor Aviannada?
Hold on, sorry, we got one more.
One more. Now, let me see. Last one, introduced by Council Ray Cooperrow. Amendment to replace the paragraph in Part Six, Administrative Organization, Section Six Three B. All rules and regulations promulgated by authorized vote of the Traffic and Parking Commission, except for temporary or emergency rules and regulations promulgated for no more than 90 days, shall only become effective if and when the city council affirmatively approves such rule and/or regulation by a majority vote of the full city council. Traffic Commission may vote to approve a temporary or emergency rule or regulation or take effect immediately, provided that such temporary or emergency rule or regulation shall expire after 90 days unless the city council has voted in the interim to reject the rule, in which case it shall expire immediately upon such vote.
What is the wish of the counsel? Counselor Rob?
I'd like to adopt on a roll call vote, and I'd like to speak on it.
Counselor Ray Cooperrow would like to adopt under roll call, and Counselor, you have the floor.
Quick information.
Sure, go ahead, Counselor Todd Taylor.
This question could be for the city solicitor. In the wording "vote of the full" city council, does the word, having the word "full" in there mean that everyone would have to be there, or is, is, can we omit the word "full" and just a vote of the city council?
I give the floor to the city solicitor.
So it just means a majority of the full city council, not the majority of those present today. So let's say there's only 10 people in, at the meeting. It would be a majority of 10 people. Here, it would be a majority of the 11 people.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Cooperrow?
Can I offer a friendly amendment?
Counselor Todd Taylor asks for a friendly amendment. I will point to the clerk if that is a viable request. Okay, so what is your friendly amendment?
So, so it seems, it seems that, you know, we may have a hard time getting 11 people here, so that, you know, I think a vote of the, either, either put a, you know, a supermajority of it, or, you know, just a quorum, or be specific, I think full city council is, you know, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what, if that would entail, as the city solicitor said, that all 11 people would have to be here to be voted on, and I don't think that makes a lot of sense. So I, I'm offering a friendly amendment to?
Yeah, that is, that is a majority of us.
Counselors, you can't have a conversation. But Counselor Todd Taylor, the, one of the proposals here is how about amending it to six votes?
Yes.
Six votes? Okay, so Counselor Todd Taylor proposes a friendly amendment to change the wording of the full city council to actually say, "vote of six city council votes," if that makes sense.
That means exactly the same thing.
I'm sorry?
So even if there's 10 people here, you would have to have six votes?
Yes.
Yes.
So I think that's what he meant, but as the full city council, we couldn't take a vote unless 11 people were here.
Through the chair, everyone, through the chair. Okay, so the friendly, so it's Counselor Todd Taylor, clarification, as it stands, you want to reword it that way, or do you want to leave it as is? What is your motion?
To reword it?
To reword it?
I, I think it's to require six votes.
To require six votes? Okay, so, yeah, did, our city clerk, did you get that? Council clerk, great. So can you repeat, Council clerk, what is the motion before us?
We have the amendment introduced by Council Ray Cooperrow, and his would be the full city council. And then the amendment by Counselor Taylor reduces it to a six-vote requirement.
Okay.
Okay, so now you're going to have to vote on amending the amendment.
Okay. I do want to give Counselor Ray Cooperrow a chance to speak as the original author of the motion in front of us. So if that's okay with this council, Counselor Ray Cooperrow, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. For years, we are the elected official of the people. The people put us here. If we, we, we always say we have the final say. We do have the final say. They come to us and say to us, okay, this is what we want you to do. They approve it, then they come up to us and we can say yes or no. But there's one difference that this will change. We send it to them, and they can say no, and it doesn't even have to come to us. It doesn't come to us at all. We should have the opportunity ourselves to vote in what we want, yes or no. They shouldn't have the power to tell us that we can't. If one of my constituents asks me, can you please put this here, can you put this there? And I can't turn around and say, well, we can't do it because they say we cannot do it. It shouldn't be that they can't tell us. It should be us telling us. We should have the final vote. If we say we have the final vote on something, so let it be the final vote. Let us decide the fate of our constituents. Let them determine, you know, and, but the way it's done now, you send, and it's happened to many of us, it's happened to me many times, you send something down to the Parking and Traffic Commission. The Parking and Traffic Commission says, well, I don't like what you say, and it never comes up to us. It never comes up to the full body of the city council what you proposed. It doesn't. It doesn't come up to us. It should come up to us, and we decide exactly what we want. Do we want to do it, or we don't? It should be the choice of us, the council, the elected official of it. It shouldn't be to them to say, okay, we're not going to do what you say. This only does one thing. It assures that whatever city council sends something down to them, they can't deny it. It has to come back up to us, and we deny it. So if my fellow colleagues don't like what's happening, they can say no. That actually really means that you have the final say. You cannot say you have the final say when the say is there to start with, and at the end, it doesn't come to you. So you have the final say on what they say, but you don't have the final say on what you ask. That is the difference. The difference between final say as they have it, or final say as the body of the council says. We do not have the power. We do not. This, one thing we should have, we don't have it. We should have the power to say, okay, we're going to send it to you. We send it to you and say, fine, if we send it to you, you send it back to us. You shouldn't say, no, we're not going to even look at it, we're going to deny it. It shouldn't be that way. And I believe that my fellow colleagues, they should want to represent their constituents. If they say to them, here, I want you to put a speed bump, or here, I want you to put a stop sign, they should have the ability to say to them, okay, send it to them, they recommend yes or no, and then we choose their recommendation. It shouldn't just go to them and never comes up to us. That is the whole thing. That's all this does. It doesn't do anything. It doesn't change nothing. The only thing it changes is the ability of us ourselves to determine and say, okay, it comes up to you, yes or no. That's all it does. And it, it also gives them power to do what they want for 90 days, do whatever they want, unless we say no. But the only thing this does, I'm going, I'm returning, I'm going back to the same thing, but the only thing, the whole purpose of this is just to make sure that the elected official have a say when it comes to how the city's parking, the city streets, everything that is done through the Parking and Traffic Commission, they have a say. They should have a say. They shouldn't say, no, we're not going to even send it to you. That's all it is. If you are an elected official and you truly work for the people, the people should have a say. If the people don't have a say, you're not an elected official.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other counsel of this body wish to speak on the matter? Counselor Aviannada?
With respect to my colleague, I'll be voting against this for two reasons. Number one, everything he just said isn't what he said and what he's writing. So it's exactly the same item, and I'm not going to go say, 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 but what he's writing here and what he's trying to propose are completely two different things. It actually does not change anything that is already in the charter. If anything, all you have done is change it from 30 days, which is currently in the charter for the city council to act upon any recommendations made by the traffic board, to 90 days. Why we need to prolong any action by the traffic commission by another 60 days?
No side conversations through the chair.
I have no idea. Right now, this council has to act on the actions of the Parking, Traffic and Parking Commission within 30 days. That's fair. That's how we do business in the city of Chelsea. Why it's changed to 90, I have no idea. There's no explanation given to why we need to make it three times as long. And as I stated earlier, there is absolutely no difference, other than the change in the date, the days, between what is currently in there and what is there now. And so it does not do anything that the gentleman is trying to do. In that case, again, I would say I'm voting against it. It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Any other counselor who has not spoken yet wish to speak? I see Counselor Robinson.
Just, just to add to my colleague here, already in the charter that I had proposed because during the summer months, the traffic commission used to take action, and we put in a rule that they could not do any business until we come back in September. So that's already in the charter, all right? So I don't, I'm a little confused at what my colleague is asking for here, going to 90 days when we actually operate on 30 days like we've always been.
Okay, any other new counselor who has not spoken yet wish to speak on it? Counselor Vido?
Through the chair, I'd like to ask the city solicitor to please explain the law as it is right now versus what's being proposed by Counselor Cooperrow.
Okay, through the chair, city solicitor, I, the council requests that you please explain what is the ordinance now, what the rule is now in comparison to what is being proposed.
Okay, so what the council has proposed is to remove the entire six dash three B, which is one particular paragraph, and then there's another section under B that's in the charter that is referenced a little bit closely to what is going on in the amendment.
Can you, can you just literally explain it to me like I'm a five-year-old because I can't see?
In very simple terms, please.
So in simple terms, he's trying to first get rid of the exclusive authority that the charter provided to the Traffic and Parking Commission to make changes as to traffic and parking in the city of Chelsea. He's extended the time period for which the city council has to respond to the traffic and parking rules and regulations, but he's also extended that whatever the Traffic and Parking Commission does, they cannot act upon it until you approve it.
That's right.
So in the current charter, you have the right to reject it or approve it, or not act at all within 30 days. He's giving you 90 days to approve it only, and, and, in order, in order for anything that the Traffic and Parking Commission does, it has to be approved by you. So he's basically taking the exclusive authority power that the Traffic and Parking Commission has and granting it back to the city council.
So currently, I'm sorry, I just?
Yes, so Counselor Vido?
I'm rusty. So basically, as it is, the Traffic Parking Commission makes a decision. It comes before us. We have 30 days to decide whether yea or nay or nothing. If we decide nothing, it still will be yea, correct?
No. So, yes, if you don't act on it at all, it goes through.
Automatically. Now, if we say nay, it goes back to the Traffic Parking Commission, and they can decide?
They start all over again, they cannot do it again, they, they have to work on what they presented to you.
And then we just ping pong, ping pong this thing back and forth?
Yes.
Okay. And what is in the current proposal that changes that? Anything? Or are we just extending time?
So in the current proposal, your authority is that you have to act within 90 days.
Okay. In the proposal in front of us by the counselor, to clarify?
So, basically, you, I'm a little confused because I didn't draft this, so I think you should probably ask the city council of what, what he means by this. The current proposal before you is that all, all rules can only become effective if and when the city council affirmatively approves such rule and regulation by a majority of the city council. So basically, when you choose to not act, that does not make it happen, meaning that they can only go forward with their rules and regulations until you vote to affirm it. There is no timeline for the approval.
Counselor Vido, does that answer your questions, your point of information, point of inquiry?
I guess, I guess it does, but I just don't understand the 90-day situation.
So the 90 days is about the temporary rules and regulations that they can, they can do. So, and it still allows them to promulgate temporary rules for 90 days.
Okay, Counselor Todd Taylor has a point of information. You have the floor, Counselor Todd Taylor.
My question is, that, on the 90 days, is that, was that designed to cover the summer break so that they can't approve something and we don't meet for, we don't meet for 30 days because it's summer break, and then, that's what that is designed for, correct? So that it would always have to come back before the city council for a?
No dialogue here. Please, Counselor Todd Taylor, continue.
So the summer break is already in the current charter. So if they promulgate something on the beginning of July, it cannot be effective until after the council comes back and has the opportunity?
The clock doesn't start running until after the break is over?
That's correct.
Okay. So is there, if I could just offer another friendly amendment to, to, to strike the 90-day down to 30-day if it's already in the charter, it's, it just confuses things?
Counselor Todd Taylor, are you making a request? Are you making a motion to?
Yes.
Offer another amendment? What is your other amendment for our records?
To delete the 90-day provision and keep it as the 30-day because the other thing was already, the other provision to prevent the traffic commission from passing something before a summer break is already in the charter. So this 90 days is, is superfluous.
So I am going to ask our council clerk to please clarify that amendment. So what we have here, what, what we have here is Counselor Todd Taylor proposes a friendly amendment to change the days from 90 to 30.
If you already have it in the ordinance, you should just eliminate it then.
Elim, that, that's what I'm saying, eliminate.
You want to eliminate.
Not change it to third, just eliminate the 90-day.
Counselor Todd Taylor, no, he's requesting, please, through the chair. So Counselor Todd Taylor is requesting to eliminate from the order in front of us?
It reads 90 days.
The 90 days requirement.
But the 90-day requirement is only exempting those temporary rules and regulations that are in place for 90 days when you read this amendment. So it's not about the 90-day city council?
You know what? I, I would, I would draw the amendment because, because it's, 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 it's too convoluted, and I think that this, it's just too convoluted, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Try.
Okay, okay, Counselor...
I tried to fix it, it's, it's...
Counselor Todd Taylor removes the amendment that was mentioned previously, and now we, anyone else who has not spoken yet, any other Counselor wish to speak? Go ahead, Counselor Vidal, your point of inquiry.
Okay, so I, no, I'm speaking now.
Oh, you're speaking, okay, you have the floor.
I just spoke with the, the City Manager, and so now I, I get it. And so currently, as it stands, when, when the, the Traffic Parking sends us something, we have thirty days to act on it, yay or nay. If it's nay, it goes back. If we do nothing, it still becomes law after thirty days. This would prevent that from happening. And in a way to restore power and to adequately represent the community, I don't have a problem with that. I'm a little perplexed about the ninety day situation, um, but that, but, but I just wanted to kind of name that out loud because that's what I was able to gather after speaking with the City Manager, and I just wanted to be clear for the public and for other folks.
Thank you, Counselor Vidal. Anyone else wish to speak on it? Okay, we, we go back to Counselor Todd Taylor.
I just wanted to say that I do think, I think that this amendment is, is now a little too convoluted, I'll be voting no, but it, it, Counselor Recupero has a point that there is kind of a infinite loop here that exists, it's a flaw in the charter, and it does need to be addressed. I just don't think this is the way to address it. The City Council should not, the will of the City Council should not be thwarted by unelected board members. Now, I support members of the public on the boards and the power of those boards to act independently. However, this is, I believe, the only, um, maybe it's not the only board, the Licensing Board, I think, acts, acts this way, but it, at, at any rate, the, the, the power of the Traffic Commission should not supersede the, the, the power of this City Council where we are the elected members of the, uh, of the public. So I believe Counselor Recupero has a point, I just don't think it was made clear in this amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Todd Taylor. Um, okay, anyone else? Okay, we move to roll calls, so please, uh, Counsel Clerk, clarify the vote that is in front of us, the motion in front of us.
The sixth vote one?
Counselor Todd Taylor?
I have all withdrawn, my minutes.
Okay, okay.
For the record, and for everyone here present, that has been withdrawn, so the motion in front of you is the one that will be mentioned by our Counsel Clerk.
Counsel Recupero, uh, his motion is to adopt. Okay.
Can you explain the vote?
A yes vote would to, uh, would be to adopt the proposal on the written amendment as written, and a no vote would be to deny it. Okay? Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Counsel Abad Nader?
No.
No. Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
No.
No. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Taylor?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
No.
Counsel Zabit?
No.
Three in favor, eight opposed, motion defeated.
Okay.
Okay, you have one more vote on the order. You have the order introduced by Counsel Robinson to vote on the proposal as amended. A yes vote would be to adopt and a vote, or no vote would be to deny. Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Abad Nader?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
And Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Eleven, eleven in favor and none opposed. The order is adopted as amended.
All right, we're now moving on to new business. So we have a resolution introduced by Counsel Recupero regarding Quigley Park.
Accept and file the communication, I'd like to speak on it and a, and a roll call vote.
Uh, Counsel Recupero asked that we have a roll call vote on the order for the park grant. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. For a long time, Quigley Park was being neglected. Last time they fixed it was six, seven years ago, and they didn't spend much money on it. So I petitioned the city very hard to get this grant, and I finally get it. And now this grant is gonna give the resident of that area a good park, a park where the little kids can play and give, a good park, which they deserve. They haven't had one. I've lived there for forty years, and I don't remember that park ever being done all over. Last time I remember, maybe it was twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago. I haven't seen that park, nothing done to that park for twenty years or more. So now, it's a great thing that it's finally being recognized in that area, that there, there's people there, kids, a lot of children, they use the park, and adults. So it's a good thing now that they're finally, the city, I commend the City Manager and Mr. Alex Tram and the team for finally stepping up, like they say in baseball, to the plate and fixing something that should have been fixed a very long time ago. Thank you.
I think, it's two votes, right? I think it's...
This is second reading? This is first reading?
It's a first reading. I would think, well...
Want to move it to a second reading?
Well, I think because we're taking four hundred thousand dollars from the General Stabilization Fund...
Move it to a second reading, yeah. Move it to a second reading, Leo.
Move to a second reading.
I disagree.
We have a next order introduced by Counsel Recupero regarding that the City Manager instructs the electrical company to fix all streetlights within the city and install automatic sensors. Counsel Recupero?
I, I adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objection?
I think I spoke on this bef, before. I think I did, but it wasn't on the agenda. So what I think is, I, I don't know, but I think last meeting we spoke on it. I'm pretty sure I did, but I, and I paid again for the same thing. So, I, what can I say? I said it already. How much more can I say? I can't say much, so...
Thank you. Next order.
Thank you.
Order introduced by Counsel Recupero regarding Subcommittee on Subpublic Safety to be held to discuss public safety of the city. Counsel Recupero?
Adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, you may speak. Go ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm calling this meeting just to see how our city's doing. What, uh, is, uh, how's our city? How is this health? How does it doing? How's the health of our city? More or less health, I don't mean to say, uh, the border health, I mean how the city is doing, period. Is the people happy with the way it is, or do we have a lot of, uh, crime? How's the crime being addressed, or whatever we have? That's it, just...
It, it's, it's not a health, you're, you're talking public safety.
Yes.
Alright, you said health, so...
Well, that, but I, I, I meant the health, I, I, but I rephrased it, I said not the health or the border health. I meant in a form like, how was the life of our city been? You know, the, the, the life form, okay. Let me put it in other words, we won't say that. The public safety is just to see how our city's doing, how the crime rate is in our city. Plain and simple.
Counselor Rodriguez, did you want to? No? Okay.
Next order introduced by Counsel Recupero, order that the City Manager look into putting necessary funds in the budget for the City Council to hire a part-time legal counsel.
Counsel Recupero?
I'd like to adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to talk about it.
You have, Counsel Robinson objects.
Well, can I take a roll call vote?
You may have a roll call vote. Want to speak on a, want to speak on the roll call?
Yes. Okay, we've been through this many times. I, the, the City Manager appropriated money for us before. I know we have all kinds of lawyers, right? But I believe that the City Council itself should have an independent lawyer, so when it asks for it, it could ask question and have an opinion. Doesn't mean we're gonna have a lawyer all the time. I believe, like the City Manager said before, it's an appropriation to have a lawyer on a retainer when we need to ask questions. It's all it is. And there's nothing wrong with asking another lawyer. What's wrong with it? Isn't it a good thing? When you go to a doctor and you don't agree with what a doctor says, right? You go to a second opinion. So what is wrong with that? Before, the argument was we have all these lawyers upstairs, but actually, nothing to say about Ms. Watson, she's a great lawyer, she's, nothing reflected on her. She's a great lawyer, there's no saying that she's a bad lawyer. The only thing is that I believe that she works for the city. Does she truly work for us? I don't know. She, maybe we should have an independent body that says, hey, not, not that she's a bad lawyer, but she actually works for the city. We should have our own lawyer. And that's the whole thing. And we're not gonna have a lawyer all the time, just sometimes when we need to ask something where that we might not agree with Ms. Watson says...
Ten seconds, Counselor.
Alright, that, that's it, it's, it's all it is. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
He wants a roll call, lay it on the table. Does he want a roll call?
Do you want a roll call? Lay on the table, roll call.
Counsel Recupero moved, uh, roll call, uh, on Leo Robinson's motion to lay it on the table. Uh, the vote would be, uh, yes, yes to lay it on the table, no not to lay it on the table. Okay? Counsel Vidal?
No.
Counsel Abad Nader?
No.
Counsel Recupero?
No.
Counsel Garcia? Absent. Uh, Counsel Vega Maldonado? Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Taylor?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
No.
And Counsel Zabit?
No.
One in favor, nine opposed, and one absent. Motion laid on the table is defeated. You have now the actual roll call of the adoption introduced by Counsel Recupero.
Now we have a roll call on the actual order, which is just to ask the City Manager looking to put in funds into a budget for the City Council to hire a part-time legal counsel. Debate has ended, we will now have a roll call. A yes will support requesting funds from the City Manager for legal counsel, and no is a no.
Right, Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Abad Nader?
No.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia? Absent. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
No.
No? Yes or no?
No. She said no.
Do you support the counsel, legal counsel?
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Okay. Uh, Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Taylor?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
No.
And Counsel Zabit?
No.
One, two, three, four in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six opposed, and one absent, the motion is defeated.
Okay, now, request introduced by City Council Robinson regarding the City Manager consider increasing the hours of part-time ISD building inspectors to full-time positions and considering doing so in FY twenty-two, utilizing free cash once it's certified.
Adopt this unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections.
Wait a minute, hold on, I share your concern. I believe that this is an overreach, and a request if you were to have the City Manager report back on it, but you can't order him to make these positions full-time, nor to do the use of the, um, well, consider...
It's not an order.
Consider, okay, I'm sorry, consider, I missed a word, I apologize, Counsel, I just missed a word. Yep. So it's a consideration, it's a suggestion to the City Manager that he do so. So if you agree that this is a suggestion you approve of, then, but the City Manager may or may not do it.
Okay. Next order introduced by Counsel...
It was, it was under suspension, is there any objection to this being against under suspension?
Yeah, I have a problem with this, I feel like we're impeding with the day-to-day operations, I don't think that we should be...
Counsel Vidal objects to it being passed under suspension, we'll need a roll call vote, just to clarify. Counsel Robinson's order is a regarding to the City Manager that he consider increasing the hours of part-time ISD building inspectors to full-time positions and by consider to do so in FY twenty-two, utilizing free cash once it's certified. It's a roll call vote.
I think that is out of order, because, because, because this is not interfering with the, this is a request to consider. That is, that, how can a request to consider be, be construed as interfering in...
No, no, I, I didn't. It's not, we're just saying she have just, she objected to it being passed under suspension...
I'm sorry, pardon me, pardon me.
And she used that as a basis for that.
I understand, I understand now, thank you.
Correct, but that's the, but that's her reasoning for objecting to it passing under suspension, but doesn't actually mean that we can't roll call vote and pass it. So her opinion is that she believes that it impedes, but it doesn't actually do so, but that's her opinion. So we can vote, and it, a yes is to, for this to be sent to the City Manager to consider doing so. If you believe it, if you want it, vote yes, if not, then vote no.
Okay.
But it doesn't force the City Manager to do so.
Do anything, right. All set?
All set, ready to go.
Counsel Vidal?
No.
Counsel Abad Nader?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero? No.
No.
Counsel Garcia?
Absent.
Absent. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Absent.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
And Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, three opposed, two absent, the motion is adopted.
We have a request introduced by Counsel Abad Nader regarding that the Traffic and Parking Commission place on their agenda the designation of three parking spaces on Washington Avenue between Addison and Orange Street for two-hour parking only, including residents from the hours of nine AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday.
Under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none. Counsel, uh, Lopez, yes?
Yeah, I actually was for the, and I agree with you, order. Um, this, uh, this doctor who was having an operation there as a business dental office, he's, he was looking for, to get parking for his patients, and, again, I think that comes to something that Counsel Recupero mentioned, that, uh, it was denied. I think twice, I was, twice or three times I was at this meeting where Parking and Traffic said, "No, we cannot help you." So we're not trying to help business owners who are trying to do business in Chelsea, and this park was denied when he was asking for this. So I, I agree with this, and I think we should help this business owner, one oh nine, Washington Avenue.
Next order introduced by Counsel Abad Nader regarding the Subcommittee on Commerce to be held to discuss the Opera Civic Engagement Process.
If there are no objections.
Seeing none. Request by, uh, introduced by Counsel Taylor regarding the City Manager investigate due to numerous concerns and complaints from residents, possible solutions both local and state level to our coyote control problem within the city. Counsel Taylor?
Asked to adopt under suspension, if there's no objections, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objection?
So, as of late, I have had several calls regarding coyotes, uh, in Prattville, and
So, as of late, I have had several calls regarding coyotes in Prattville, and residents have been texting me pictures of coyotes out during the day, that this is not just at night, this is coyotes wandering around people's lawns, you know, one of my friends who lives up on Kimball sent me a picture, he's got two small kids who, you know, we'd hate to have them totter out and meet a hungry coyote. So, I'm not sure exactly what can be done, if anything, but I would like the city manager to please investigate this, and not just what can be physically done as far as removing coyotes, but also steps that can be taken to mitigate the problem, whether it's, you know, putting down, I know one of the neighbors said that they had put down mothballs, and that they saw less of the coyotes after that. If there, if there's any type of instructions that can be given to the residents in dealing with the coyote problem, and what the laws are, we've also heard reports that people are actually feeding the coyotes. Are there laws against people feeding the coyotes? You know, so, all of this, I think, needs to be addressed in some sort of public matter, either in a, either in a meeting, or at least putting up some material on the city's social media, and having the animal control officer engage with the community. Thank you.
Seeing no further business, we'll now move on to announcements, if anyone has any announcements. Counsel DeMoli Vido?
I just want to say that it's a privilege to be back here. I have been very ill, as folks should know, and I am receiving treatment out of state. I'm only in town visiting family, and will be heading out where I will be having eye surgery. I have not, wasn't able to join virtually because I didn't have the option, but then I thank you, I wanted to thank you, Counsel President, for allowing that to be possible, but then my vision failed, and so, I'm not really able to read the agendas, and so I just want to really thank Fatima for sitting with me and going over everything. But right now, I'm not in a position where I could join, and I wanted to make sure that the public knew that. And I just want to thank everybody for their support of me through what's been a very tough year. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero?
Moment of silence.
Into the microphone, not yet, that's not, not yet. Any other announcements? I just wanted to say, first one thing, this past Saturday, I want to congratulate the Friends of O'Malley Park, they had the kite day, and I thought it was a great event, a lot of families showed up, it was a great, great Saturday, plenty of wind that day, so I thought it was a great little event to be taking advantage of the park. I won't be able to attend myself, but this Thursday is the CPA meeting, Community Preservation Board is meeting this Thursday, and it's the, it's the deadline for the applications or the possible funding for projects. And I hope some of my colleagues can go, I just, I can't go because I have a scheduling conflict. But, reason why I bring this up is, as many of you know, I thought the CPA would have been a great tool in our community to create parks, to create, preserve our historic buildings in the city, but more importantly, create affordable housing in our community, more so than our funding, than, rather, our zoning does. And, it's disappointing for me at this point, and frustrating, quite frankly, that I read the latest, I want to say guidelines, of the CPA, and if you read through that CPA information that I gave you, it has been the decision of the board itself that, for them to fund any housing projects, that they will only do so for housing that will assist 50% AMI guidelines. Now, for those of you at home, AMI is the average medium income, and those are the guidelines we use, we use for, at least for our rental inclusionary zoning, a scale from 80 to 50 to 30, towards lowest 30. On our housing side, we require the minimum of 80%. And, the income guideline for 50% right now, is that any individual, single individual, they can't make more than $42,300. Now, if it's two people, it's $48,300, barely, you know, just under 49K. The problem that I have is that, if you take a look at what is going on in the labor market right now, and who I think of, at least personally, who I think of is living here in this community, two people working at Amazon are making over that 50%. I don't consider them rich. Two people working, a husband and wife, working at Market Basket, I don't consider rich, and they don't qualify, according to the CPA, to have assistance in buying a home in Chelsea. Any Chelsea cop, firefighter, teacher makes over that 50%. We're basically saying, you don't deserve the assistance from the Community Preservation Act to live in Chelsea. I get that you want to help on the low end, what I didn't think is that you were going to exclude everybody else. This community, when I look at all the contractors, the working class, those are the people I'm trying to keep in this community, and they're making anywhere from 50 to 60 to 75 to $100,000. Guess what? They are not rich by any means. And, I sent out two different pamphlets, one with the guidelines, and two with the yellow guideline sheets. I'm in the real estate world, I'm a real estate professional, I know what the prices are. For you to buy a home right now in Chelsea, you have to make, if you look at the second sheet, you're in the 150% AMI. So basically, everyone else below that is not buying in Chelsea. So from 50% to 150%, you're not getting any help from this community. Why is that? I don't, that makes no sense to me, and the guidelines that they're doing. Again, I know I have heard the frustrations of my colleagues on this board about the number of waivers that have gone on, and are being, you know, we get waivers from employees who have to leave this city, this is one of the reasons they're leaving, because they can't afford here, and yet, our own city's not helping them. So I'm asking you, I plan on to, talk to them, talk to the board members, they're on the back, only your pressure can make a difference, and I'm guaranteeing, I'm letting people know, we need to make the board know that they need to expand on who qualifies for affordable. It should be up to 100% in my opinion. I'd be more than willing to help you, and I'll talk to you about this, but I think it should be raised, and, again, this Thursday is their meeting, if you have time, please go, if not, reach out to the members, you'll see their names, you'll know who they are, talk to them, and say, look, we have to expand on who should get CPA funding to be able to stay here and live in this community. Politically, I know I'm going long on this, but this is a very important matter, I think. Politically, we have too much, too many of our Americans in this country feel they've been abandoned, because we're either helping the lower scale of the poor, and then giving the tax breaks to the rich, and the middle class is getting just lost. And this is a major reason, this is an example of policy that does that. We're, you know, a lunch bucket crowd, and yet, our lunch bucket crowd is not being helped by this program that I, that is being funded by the taxpayers of this community. So, you know, again, I had to say something, again, because I can't be there this Thursday, but I'm hoping that this brings attention to it, and I hope my colleagues will, will attend the meeting, if they can, at least reach out to those members and saying, what are you thinking? Because if you're on the same page, you know, wavelength as I am, you'll see that this is a problem. At this time, if there's any other announcements, I'll take a moment of silence for anyone. Counsel Lopez?
I just want to warn, warn this president living near Central Avenue, Marvick, Chester, Shama, Shortiff, and Lynn Street, Congress, about suspicious activity that I've been seeing and received complaints about guys going to cars, trying to open the doors. A group of men hanging around, I seen them, they have a, how do you call this, motorcycle, moped, moped, and bicycles, they're running around, walking around, starting from 11:00 p.m. to like, 5:00 in the morning. When I get up and go to work, they hang around the corner, like today, I saw them, five of them, hanging out on Lynn Street and Central Avenue. So, I just want to warn the people, so, to check their cars, make sure they lock their cars, and when they leave their home, make sure, you know, the doors are locked, and if you see any suspicious behavior, please call 911. And if you don't speak the language, ask them, they should have a Spanish speaker, person there, and be aware of your surroundings, and if you are late at night, just be careful. Friday night, around 11:40 p.m., I heard some noise, a guy was running, from these three guys, one was in a car, one in a moped, and a bicycle, and three of them running behind this guy who was coming from probably a part-time job, and he was screaming, trying to get some help, and he, he was fast, they couldn't catch him. But, you know, people shouldn't be afraid coming back from work, or nobody should be afraid of these people that are walking the streets, and, you know, just be aware and be careful. Call 911, call the police, that's what they're there for, to serve us and the community. Thank you.
Moment of silence, Counsel Recupero?
I have two moments of silence. One, for Mr. Chappelle, they lived in Chelsea for many, many years, he just died yesterday. He lived on, he lived on Congress Ave, they've been residents of Chelsea for 40 years, as long as I can remember. And the next one, is for Mr. Wayne Kerr of the YMCA, he died too. He was a good gentleman, he helped a lot of kids grow up in our city, and God rest their souls, and, thank you.
Counsel Brown?
I also want to have a moment of silence for, as we pay homage to the Italian Heritage Month, for a good friend of mine, former middleweight champion of the world, Tony DiMarco, lost his life this past, last week, his general service will be on Friends Street tomorrow morning, and he, he gave us a lot of thrilling fights here, Park Casino, I'm sure you've seen many of them, he was a great fighter, and had a good fight to the end.